Member Schools Board of Education Meeting Number 1549 is now called to order. Dr. Lake, do we have any changes to the agenda?
We do not.
Do I have a motion to approve the agenda as presented?
So moved.
Second.
By Jen. Second by Kathy. Okay. All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries seven zero. All right, so now we will do the Pledge of Allegiance for all those who are able to stand, but we'll invite our students from Sappington, Concord, and gifted in pegs to come forward and lead us in the pledge.
Come on up, don't be bashful.
Yeah, everybody come on up.
There you go.
Yes.
Yeah, you can turn your face.
Guys can come on up and turn that way and whenever you're ready.
Pledge of Allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you guys for coming up. So tonight, we are recognizing all three of those schools and programs, so we're going to begin with Dr. Parker from Sappington.
Yeah! Woo! We are so excited to recognize a fourth grade student, a fifth grade student, and our 2021 Teacher of the Year, as well as our 2021 Support Staff Person of the Year. So I am going to have my Assistant Principal, Mr. Norton, come up and we will get started. Abdul and Maya, would you like to come up as well?
Hey, good evening, everybody. First, going to talk about our 2021 Support Staff Person of the Year, Ms. Leanne Barrett, our school nurse. Leanne has gone above and beyond to make sure all students and staff are safe this year with COVID-19. In a season of incredible amounts of work and complex guidelines, Leanne has been consistent, reliable, and kind. She's extremely cautious, does a wonderful job communicating with parents. Many times this year, we have needed to ask Leanne questions and always answers promptly and is very informative. These are, there are not enough hours in the day for her to do every single task, but she has been resilient throughout. Although her work has brought on many new challenges, she has done a wonderful job keeping Sappington safe and healthy. Thank you, Leanne Barrett. And let's have Maya, why don't you come over here between Dr. Parker and I? This is Maya. What grade are you in?
Fourth.
Fourth grade, here we go. So Maya stands up for her rights and others. She is brave. Maya is kind, empathetic, and an innovative student. She's always looking to include others and is a friend to all. For example, when a student in her class felt left out at recess, without hesitating, she immediately gave them a role in the activity they were doing. Maya is compassionate and looks for ways to help other students and staff. When someone at her table needs help, she will gently and quietly show them what to do or point them in the right direction. When Maya faces a difficult situation, she uses her strategies to help her solve that problem or the task at hand. Maya is also a wonderful artist and is a fantastic writer. She looks for guidance on how to grow as a leader and actively works to be a better student. Maya is also innovative. Maya works with others to design artwork and create a business. You created a business in her classroom. That's awesome. Finally, Maya is empathetic. She regularly places herself in other shoes, other shoes, and stands up for what is right. She treats others with respect and is an example to her friends and classmates. Member community, let's hear it for Maya.
Hey, look at that bow!
Maya, we have a certificate with you, with your name on it here for you, and we also have a T-shirt for you as well, so it's fitting to wear today if you want with the green. So congratulations, well deserved.
Thank you.
You're welcome.
Let's take a picture. There you go.
Abdul is our fifth grade leader. Abdul is always helpful and kind and always has a smile on his face. He thinks about others and always strives to do his personal best. He also has started, organized, and he is leading our Lost and Found Club. He shares slides with teachers with all of the clothing items so that they can have their students preview all of their items and claim all of their items. And then he tells me that they're not claiming their items and asks me to resend the slideshow. Abdul is a student leader. This year, we have taken on tours for special district office administrators, and Abdul is one of our student leaders who shares the great things that we are doing at Sappington. Please give a round of applause for our fifth grade student leader, Abdul.
Abdul, we have a certificate that recognizes you as Student of the Month, so here's that. And then we also have a T-shirt for you as well, so congratulations, well deserved.
Thank you.
I'm excited to present to you our 2021 Sappington Teacher of the Year, Mrs. Jessica Portell. Jessica has a few words to say. Jessica is our reading specialist. She is always ready to collaborate and willing to brainstorm how to support our students and our teachers in the area of reading. Jessica is a wealth of knowledge. She is patient and consistent. She establishes positive relationships with everyone. Students are excited to see her because she helps them to feel valued and appreciated. She constantly celebrates the growth of each of our students that she works with. Jessica goes above and beyond. She is always a true professional and a stellar team player. I'm excited to share with you our 2021 Teacher of the Year, Mrs. Jessica Portell.
Jessica, congratulations. We have a certificate recognizing you as Teacher of the Year, and then we also have a $25 gift certificate to our Spiritware store online, so congratulations.
Thank you very much.
Now I will introduce Dr. Angie Moleman, Principal of Concord Elementary. Come on down, Angie.
Oh, Dr. Parker, she is such a comedian. Here we go. All right. So thank you for having us tonight. I would like to also introduce our Assistant Principal, Ms. Liz Quitzer. Yay! And if we could have our students come on down, we would like to introduce these wonderful fifth grade students, Mr. Michael Yao and Brooklyn Duhadway. So thanks for coming up, friends.
All right, I'm going to go ahead and begin with Michael. Michael definitely embodies the flyer spirit, and we couldn't think of a better student to be recognized as one of our Concord Students of the Year. And your teacher wrote a wonderful poem about Michael. So it all goes with the word flyer. F is for feedback. Michael applies feedback from his teachers and peers to make sure his work is the best it can be. L is for lead. He takes initiative to lead his teammates to success in any project. He is a team player and is always willing to help. Y is for yourself. Michael is proud of who he is and all of his strengths that he brings to our classroom. His witty sense of humor is sure to make you laugh. E is for excellence. Michael excels in his academics and always pushing his boundaries to learn more. He sets goals and makes sure he takes the steps he needs to meet them. And R is for respect. I can always count on Michael to do the right thing and set a positive example for his peers. Congratulations to one of our 2021 Students of the Year Concord, Michael Yao.
Michael, we have a certificate here recognizing you as Student of the Month, and then we also have a T-shirt for you as well, so congratulations, well deserved. We're going to get a quick picture, okay?
Okay. Balance it out here. In the middle there. Look at mom, you get it? All right. Good job, honey. Nice job. All right, well, Miss Brooklyn. Okay, and our next special guest here is Ms. Brooklyn Duhadway. I heard you wanted to give a speech. No, no, she definitely was not interested in that. All right, but Brooklyn is an amazing student at Concord. Her teacher, in the words of her teacher, Ms. Turek, said she is a hard worker. She goes above and beyond in all of her classwork. Brooklyn participates in class discussions. She's always ready to help and contribute to everything the class is learning about. She is a natural leader. She seeks out opportunities to help those around her, and this is especially true of Brooklyn. Even when her teacher might be saying, "Oh, here's a student that needs help," Brooklyn has her hand in the air, ready to go to help those kiddos before the teacher can even get the idea out of her mouth. And she said, "Brooklyn is always ready to go to help those around her." I know this for a fact because Brooklyn reached out. She was in ARC and learning from home, and this was so amazing. She submitted a project. There was a call for service learning, and Brooklyn said, "I have a perfect idea." She drew up the plan, she sent them in, and she said, "I want to make a box in the lobby of Concord so that students can come and get a book if they need it. And if they have a book, they can contribute it there." And she put this together. She built this plan. Who did you build it with? Grandpa? Yeah, grandpa. And it is in our lobby, so she is leaving her legacy today at Concord. So let's give Brooklyn a big round of applause.
Here is a certificate recognizing you as Student of the Month, and then here is a T-shirt for you as well, so congratulations. Well deserved. All right.
Take a picture. Thanks, Brooklyn. Thanks for sitting down. Yeah.
Our next announcement we would like to share is our 2021 Support Staff Person of the Year, and that is our custodian, Mr. John Bush. Unfortunately, he was not able to join us this evening, but we would like to share still some special words about John. He is one of our unforeseen heroes in our building. If there's a job that needs to be done, Mr. John will for sure get it done for us. He's such an amazing person, and he does take such pride in all the work he does for our school in keeping it clean and safe for our children and for our staff. So congratulations to Mr. John. We wish you well, and we will for sure pass it on to him tomorrow.
All right, and last but not least, we'd like to call Ms. Spaghetti Gaddy Down. As her students know her, they call her Ms. Spaghetti, Ms. Geddy. So this is our wonderful art teacher at Concord, our 2001 Concord Teacher of the Year, and this lady is absolutely amazing, okay? When you want to think about an individual who is so deserving of this honor, it's Mrs. Geddy. What she does best is build relationships with children, and that goes all the way up. We just got an email today from high schoolers and how much they value the relationship that Mrs. Geddy builds with them. As our art teacher, she obviously provides excellent instruction, you know, within the art curriculum, but she always tries something new. And so I will say, in our time together, she tried choice art, which is an innovative way of teaching students, using all different kinds of mediums, and they just have a wonderful design time in art class. But like I said, most importantly, Katie builds relationships with students, and she serves on many committees in the district, works tirelessly to make displays of student artwork, participating in this St. Louis Symphony project, and Katie just has a wonderful positive attitude, and we're so lucky that she is our 2021 Teacher of the Year. So give a big round of applause to Katie.
Katie, congratulations. Here's a certificate recognizing you as Teacher of the Year and then also a $25 gift certificate, so congratulations, well deserved.
Okay, and now we're going to kick it on over to the gifted department, Ms. Tracy Bennerick.
All right, thank you. This is what happens when you miss a board meeting. So I'm first going to start with our students. So we're going to recognize a PEG student and a LEAP student, so if I could have my two students up, Jacob and Anya, come on up. And we'll go with oldest goes first, so we're going to start with Jacob Unzicker, and I have some words from your teachers that I would like to share. Jacob was always a caring and empathetic, extremely determined student, athletic and friend to all. He absolutely deserves recognition. Jacob is fun-loving and kind. He balances a desire to learn and achieve with positive relationships with his peers and his teachers. Congratulations, Jacob. The first word that comes to mind when I think of Jacob is mature. Jacob is able to have respectful deliberations in AP government and sets a great example for others. He is thoughtful with his words and has an inclusive demeanor that shows that he is willing to listen to all sides of an issue. He is inquisitive and asks questions that demonstrates his ability to think critically. We are lucky to have Jacob at Lindbergh High School. Congratulations.
Thank you.
We have for you a certificate here recognizing you as Student of the Month, and then you also get a nice new flyer T-shirt. There you go. We're going to get a quick picture here.
It's been a while since I've been a teacher. I'm not as good at projecting my voice. All right, and now we have Anya Koshuk, who is a Koshik, sorry. I even asked her how to pronounce it, so anyway. Anya is a fifth grader in LEAP, and she has grown into an incredibly confident and articulate young lady. She has expanded on our studies of robotics by asking her family to get her her own Sphero Mini and so that she can practice programming at home. She is wildly creative, can be counted on to be a peer mentor when collaborating with teammates, and is a pensive and deep critical thinker. Her teachers go on to say she is also a gracious collaborator. She goes out of her way to make others feel included and to give them a voice on the team. She is willing to challenge herself and displays a positive attitude and growth mindset when working on learning new things. Anya takes pride in her work and pushes herself to achieve at a high level. Congratulations, Anya.
Anya, congratulations. We have a certificate here recognizing you as Student of the Month, so that's for you, and then we also have a new T-shirt for you as well, so congratulations. I think we're good.
All right, and now we're going to have our 2021 Teacher of the Year come up, Mrs. Chrissy Brown. And I already told her she wouldn't have to do a speech, so I'm not even going to play that prank on her. So we will, you'll just get to hear good things about yourself. So the first is from the teacher that nominated you. So she'd love to recognize Mrs. Chrissy Brown because you have such great student relationships. Social-emotional needs are always put first in your classroom. You're part of a team, you were part of a team writing SEL curriculum two summers ago, and you're an expert on bibliotherapy. You use those skills to write amazing lessons targeted at the student needs that arise in your classroom. Mrs. Brown, you push students to think critically and make sure they see the real-world relevance of your lessons. You have rewritten the gifted science curriculum to make all of your units project-based. Your, this increases student interest and makes the learning more hands-on. You often incorporate novel engineering into your formative lessons, tying in literature and making learning rooted in real-life situations. More than anything, your team member just thinks you're an awesome, amazing team teacher. A few more words from your other colleagues. Chrissy has been an integral part of the PEGs community since she began. She brings a tremendous amount of creativity to the science curriculum and has been a joy to learn, it's been a joy to learn from you throughout the years as a professional. Your patience and care with the students is above and beyond, and you help the students feel safe and comfortable in your classroom with you as their teacher. You're able to find the balance of making learning fun, meaningful, and challenging. Chrissy was meant to be a gifted educator. Congratulations.
Chrissy, we have a certificate recognizing you for Teacher of the Year and then a $25 gift certificate for our online store. Do not let your husband Jason have access to that gift certificate, please. All right, good. So congratulations, well deserved.
You don't have anything else to hand out. I have some people that would like to come up and talk to you and all of you. So if that's okay, could I have my two PEG students come up to the front? So we are always very grateful for our PEGs program here at Lindbergh that's part of the Greater St. Louis Metro Program for exceptionally gifted students that also has a site at Pattonville. And I have two students in the PEGs program that would like to share some words about the program.
My name is Max Harbuck. I am part of the PEGs gifted program, and I think it is an important gifted program because it changed my life, and without it, I would be still in elementary school, and the education wouldn't be like up to my level in certain classes and skills. I'm not bragging. But also because of PEGs, I know what it means to be gifted, and I also have real friends in PEGs now, and I am really glad I ended up in there because it's great. And yeah, PEGs is also really helpful because it, the teachers are, their learning programs that they like enforce are more pinpointed onto like each student need because each gifted student has like a different need, and it's really important for them to be focused on individually in the class while the teacher is also taking care of the class as a whole.
Hi, I'm Adam Harbuck. PEGs is important to me because if I wasn't in PEGs, then I would be in third grade doing things that were not my level, and it would be too easy for me, and I would not have a challenge. So of course that means in PEGs, I'm probably doing things that challenge me, and I am. And I'm really thankful for the PEGs program because I feel like whenever you get into the PEGs program, most of the kids are really, really friendly to you, and that's why I'm thankful for the PEGs program.
Thank you so much. Please stay up for just a minute.
I just wanted to say on behalf of everyone on the board, thank you both for coming, and we appreciate hearing this feedback all the time. You guys did fantastic. They did great, right? We love hearing the story, and so you're not empty-handed. Here's a T-shirt for you, Max. You only get one, don't take two. And you, Adam. So thank you, guys. We appreciate you coming. And now's the time, anybody that came for just the recognition part, we take a few-minute break here, and you can excuse yourself, or you can stay for the rest of the meeting. It's your choice, but we'll take a guest and take a few minutes. All right, that took a little longer than normal. We had a larger group this evening, but we'll move on now to 5.0, which is Resolutions, and we have one this evening, which is the Lindbergh Leaders Resolution, and this is a great event every year to recognize some of the things that across the board people are doing within the district, volunteers, people who have contributed above and beyond. So this is a resolution for that group, and we'll have a banquet honoring them as well this year in person again, so that's fantastic. So do I have a motion to approve the resolution as presented?
So moved.
Second.
Motion by Matt. Second by Jen. Okay. All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries seven zero. Thank you. Now we'll move to 6.0, which is Citizen Comments. So at this time, as you know, the board will hear citizen comments regarding topics that are on tonight's agenda. It looks like this evening we have five speakers, so as I call your name and the topic you're going to discuss, please come forward. We'll start with John Struckoff on library policy. And just as a reminder, for those of you who have not spoken or not been here, we have a three-minute timeframe for each speaker.
I'm John Struckoff. I reviewed your change of library policies, and I think I understand the intention of your policy and its proponents. Pay attention to a little history, I'm going to set the tone of this. It was January 10th, 1963. Congressman Albert S. Hurlong Jr. from Florida read the list of 45 communist goals for the America into the congressional record. Did you all know that? I didn't. The purpose of him reading this was to gain insight into the liberal elite ideas and strategies for America that sounds awfully familiar today. Goal 24: Eliminate all laws governing obscenity by calling them censorship and a violation of free speech and free press. Goal 25: Break down cultural standards of morality by promoting pornography and obscenity in books, magazines, motion pictures, radio, and TV. Goal 26: Present homosexual degeneracy and promiscuity as normal, natural, and healthy. This is the Gramscan agenda of the long march through the institution spelled out explicitly, gradual takeover of the means of communication, and then using those vehicles to debauch the culture and weaken the will of the individual to resist. Today, those few who still have the courage to advocate public morality are denounced and viciously attacked. Most Americans are entirely unwitting regarding the motives behind this agenda. So that's my research on this whole thing, so here's my thoughts and my understandings, and it's purely my thoughts. Education management is all about three things: power, money, and politics. Not the children. That's my perspective from what I hear here. Children are being exploited. It's cultural Marxism. Parents are being shut out. Item three: You represent a failing institution and agenda. You're failing the students and the parents. You're failing the students and the parents. Item four: Education, the education relationship used to be a triangle: student, teacher, parent. Now, the activist agenda of a national policy is driving the local boards. I've seen this all over the country when I travel. It's everywhere. It's not unique to here. Item five: You are teaching what to think, not how to think. Item six: You should require posting all teachers' curriculum and class lessons online for parents to review. It's called transparency. It'd be nice to see the videos of the classes and see what they're being taught. It'd help the parents support the children at home. Item seven: There's a difference between a teacher activist and an activist teacher. Eight: I pray for school choice. The money follows the student, not the system. Parents rule. Item nine: It's my understanding that teachers do not need to be in a union, can opt out and save hundreds of dollars in dues, and today that's real money, and purchase better insurance than the unions for a fraction of the dues. With the economy like it is, I'd look into it. Item 10: Critical race theory, emotional search, and learning. You cannot eradicate racism with racism.
All right, Mr. Struckoff, that concludes your three minutes.
Yeah, okay. And item 11, in Florida, a recent anti-grooming legislation is opposed through by the LGBTQ movement. This will prohibit transgender sexual orientation in primary schools. Why the opposition, wherever this board stands on the legislation?
Well, thank you. Next, next we have Kristin Gardner on library policy as well.
Hi. There are many books in the library that I, as a parent, would not allow my child to access. I emphasize that I do not consent to my child having the ability to pull those books from the shelves. These sections of the policy appear to be intended to bypass my parental rights and consent. Do the libraries and American Library Association have the rights to my child's mind more than her parents? Whose child is she? Who is responsible for the overall physical, mental, emotional well-being? I contend it is not the education system. When teachers support students' physical, emotional, and sexual puberty evolution, they should have the parent involved and informed, parental permission. When teachers knowingly support the students and isolate parents by hiding interactions and action, this is commonly referred to as grooming and potential instrument of pedophilia. We all agree children are minor until the age 18. Parents have the responsibility and thus the authority to administer to their educational well-being. When a student falls prey to the subject information and is supported by the teachers and administration, and is fueled by peer pressure, and ends up in a hospital physically or mentally damaged, will the board, the librarians, the librarian association, the union, the LGBTQ activists be there to comfort the child and tend to their healing and pay the bills? No, none of you will because none of you care. You succumb to power, money, and politics and got your handler's agenda installed. A damaged child every now and then is a consequence, intended or unintended. Sounds like textbook sociopath to me. You, the board members, are supposed to represent the community. From my research, in excess of two-thirds of parents do not want you to invade their parental boundaries. My call to action: postpone the vote until the parental boundaries are well-defined and supported in these policies. Rather than parents being required to opt out, make it so parents are required to opt in. Probably would take much less policing. If you do not support the parents, you are violating my freedoms of conscience, just like your policies are attempting to do for minor children in your education system. Focus on educating students to be contributing members of society. I am quite sure there's an opportunity for significant and measurable improvement. We let you be educators, so educate, and do not interfere with moms and dads being parents because they are our children, not yours. Also, what do you all? Okay.
Thank you. Next, Martha DuChalm on the book challenge.
One housekeeping question first. I have a poem to read and a comment. I don't know if you want to start the timer at my poem or at the public comment. Okay. "Where the Sidewalk Ends" by Shel Silverstein. There is a place where the sidewalk ends and before the street begins. And there, the grass grows soft and white; and there, the sun burns crimson bright; and there, the moonbird rests from his flight to cool in the peppermint wind. Let us leave this place where the smoke blows black and the dark street winds and bends; past the pits where the asphalt flowers grow, we shall walk with a walk that is measured and slow, and watch where the chalk-white arrows go to the place where the sidewalk ends. Yes, we'll walk with a walk that is measured and slow, and we'll go where the chalk-white arrows go, for the children, they mark, and the children they know, the place where the sidewalk ends. Why did I read this poem? Because it perfectly captures the unique and essential role that adolescence serves as a bridge from childhood to adulthood. The issues associated with the book challenges don't stem from a desire to suppress the voices of various identity groups. Rather, they speak to a broader value questions. Does exposing Lindbergh students to mature content at increasingly younger ages short-circuit adolescents? How does this impact student mental health? When, how much, and what type of mature content should be shared with students? Where does the Lindbergh family find itself between the competing interests of education and formation? These questions need resolution, and going through the book challenge process while ignoring the larger issues is negligent and only fosters more dysfunction. The time to bring the Lindbergh family members to the table for a conversation about these larger value questions is long overdue. The fallout from divisiveness in the board chambers has led to a drain on staff time, district resources, and community patience. Quite frankly, it's an embarrassment that this has been allowed to continue without recognition that an intervention is needed. It's time for the superintendent to demonstrate leadership and ask the board to put a committee together to examine these questions, working together to determine the place where Lindbergh's own sidewalk should end. Thank you.
Thank you. Next is Mary Lee Sauer on library policy.
Any member of this board that approves the new library policy should resign. The library policy gives rights to the librarian, who is a public employee, and takes those rights from the parents and taxpayers. Does this board represent the community and taxpayers or politically biased groups like the radical ALA? Second, this policy allows the librarian to select books, allows the library to select books in accordance with current trends in education and literature. What does this mean? What is the source of these current trends? Is it Gloria Ledson Billings, one of the most widely assigned readers in teachers' colleges for the last several decades, who wrote various influential papers explaining how to inject critical race theory into education? Or could it be Richard Rohrty, a man whose goal was to realize a radical leftist, whose goal was to realize a radically leftist end and orient education toward crafting new forms of selfhood and social organization? Rohrty says that diversity does not exist in a classroom unless it's relativistic and irrational. He does not believe in the individual. He says that our individual choices obligates us to a group. His goal was to remove morals, cultural touchstones, authoritative texts, reason, and rational thought, and replace it with emotions to develop a tribal, us versus them type of delineated thought to reorganize society. Thelma Levine from PBS said to Rohrty, "You are the enemy of all that is good and true. You are a philosophical Antichrist here to bring our civilization to an apocalypse." Yet Rohrty is a continuing and current trend in education. I spoke at the December board meeting and showed how the individual goodness, how the individual goodness, truth, rational thinking has been removed from the syllabite and the classroom. Cultural touchstones like To Kill a Mockingbird or The Great Gatsby, gosh, even Thanksgiving, have been pulled from our curriculums and our school libraries, replaced by contemporary novels, many of which are vulgar and graphic, and do not support our societal morals, unity, truth, nor our American values and principles. Rohrty would say that a child having sex with an adult is not rape. Rather, that child is creating himself and displaying intellectual curiosity and sensitivity. These educational trend centers are complete sickos. This library policy is vague and lacks transparency for a reason. In this district today, there's no standard curriculum, there's no standard historical texts, there's no standard for pornography, there's no fundamental core knowledge base for our students, there's no valid standardized tests, and now there's no clear standard for our libraries. This policy is poorly written, unclear, and can easily support a dangerous, harmful agenda. Show this community that students are your top priority by voting no on this administration's policy. Thank you.
Last, we have Scott Sifton on masking.
My name is Scott Sifton, and so I am not wearing green today, and I felt badly about that because it's St. Patrick's Day, but now I feel even worse about it because this is Lindbergh. I'm sorry. My children attended Lindbergh schools for several years, some of their most formative years, and I want to thank you and everybody in this district for the fantastic job you did for my children. I represented much of this school district in the Missouri Senate for eight years and am currently filed as a candidate for the vacant United States Senate seat that'll be on the ballot in November. But before all that, for nine years, I sat where you sit, served nine years on the Afton Board of Education, and two terms as board president. So I know that serving on a school board can be challenging in even the best of times, and heaven knows, this last couple of years with this pandemic have been anything but the best of times. We never faced anything like it when I was on the board. I cannot even imagine everything that you all and the teachers and staff in the district have had to deal with these last two years. I know what it's been like as a parent. You've had to make tough calls to do what you believe is best for kids, and now you've been sued for it. Missouri Attorney General Eric Schmidt is simply wrong on both the law and the policy. Masking policy should be, and is a matter of law, is a matter of local control in Missouri. But this is about more than mask. It's about the rising tide of extremist intervention in our local schools. The kind of extremism that results in Toni Morrison's very first novel getting pulled off the bookshelves not too far from here, right at the start of Black History Month. That got reversed, and that shouldn't have even been a question to begin with. The kind of extremism that pushes for Don't Say Gay legislation, the kind that seeks to erase painful parts of our history that are critical to who we are as a people. Last January 6th, we saw an assault on our national Capitol, and today we are seeing those same forces led by Steve Bannon working to gain control of our school buildings. So all I can say is if you support local control, study up on the candidates, and be sure to vote on April 5th. Thank you.
Okay, that concludes citizen comments for the agenda items. So thank you for coming tonight and addressing the board, and we'll continue with board business at this time. We'll go to 7.0, which is communications, and we'll start with calendar of events with the board secretary.
All righty, here we go. So if anybody is not aware, we do not have school tomorrow, and next week is spring break, so better prepare. What's that?
They're all aware.
We're all aware, okay. We're going to make this a really long meeting then, so we can't leave early for tomorrow. March 29th is Teaching and Learning Board Advisory. April 5th is an extremely important day, it's election day. So as Scott Sifton said, make sure you study your candidates and get out and vote. That night, we also planned a virtual parent speaker series, so maybe next year, let's not do that so we can make sure everybody goes out to vote. LHS has Senior One Act, so it's seniors doing, presenting one acts. On April 7th through 9th, April 8th is our Lindbergh Leaders Banquet at Royal Orleans, always wonderful to honor our leaders in the district. April 11th is the Gifted Speaker Series. And April 12th, we have this special board meeting where we swear in our Board of Education members, our new ones. Again, that's two seats open and four candidates running. April 13th is Middle School Percussion, and April 14th is Student Life. April 15th is No School. Maybe that's an advantage so we can get our taxes filed, I'm not sure. Make sure you do that by midnight. The 18th is Technology Board, Finance Board, Advisory is April 19th, and then another Parent Speaker Series on April 19th as well. And then April 21st, we're right back here for more fun for a regular Board of Education meeting.
Thank you. And I, go ahead.
Can I ask a question about the calendar? Just, okay, the speaker series is virtual and recorded, right? Just to make sure, okay. Thanks.
I think April 5th, along with the election, is also the Lindbergh Foundation Scholarship Night, too. That's a wonderful thing, and a lot of kids get well-needed money for their college education that night. It's really a great night.
So vote early, is what you're saying? Get out and vote early.
Vote early, yes.
Vote early.
7.02 is Report of Meetings. This is the time where everyone can report on any meetings they attended.
I attended the SSD Governing Council meeting last week. So the Peer Review Committee, that was formed this year, they meet every four, or they're formed every four years to write the report. They gave an update. They are pretty much at the end of their data collection process, and they'll start writing their recommendations soon. So June, I think, is when they'll present the actual report. They did their budget workshop about what they're doing for next year's budget. There is a PowerPoint presentation in their board docs if you want to see it. They are adding 47 additional staff members to be spread out through SSD and partner districts. And then two new Board of Edu, well, they are new. Two Board of Education members were elected, appointed for Subdistrict 3, which is Parkway, is Ms. Katie Potroff, and she was an incumbent candidate and was running, she didn't have anyone running against her. And Subdistrict 4, which is Ferguson, Florissant, Pattonville, and Riverview Gardens, Mr. Scott Moller was appointed to that position. So, thanks.
Thank you. Anyone else?
So I have a meeting.
Yeah, go ahead.
I like to go to meetings. On March 7th, Monday, March 7th, was our legislative forum with MSBA, and I'll just start with a few of the bills that we need to be watchful of. And one, as always, that's coming up again, is moving school board elections to November election time, which MSBA does not support. They actually talked about Clay County in Missouri moved all of their municipal things into the April election and freed up the November for all of the political-type positions. So they're seeing if that'll take traction in Missouri, if others will do that. Literacy and school innovation, Senate Bill 681 is coming up, and then charter school expansion is still out there. They're assuming or thinking that the St. Louis piece of that will actually drop off this year, and it may just have Kansas City on it. So I think that's, that's what's going on there. And so then, the meeting was actually really, is very exciting. Normally, when we go, it's, you know, a speaker, and we talk, and we learn things, but this year was really neat. It was Women in Leadership Month, and so we had women senators as the panelists. And so Senator Carla Esslinger, Senator Elaine Ganon, and Senator Cindy O'Loughlin, and Senator Jill Shoup, which we're all familiar with her, were the panelists. And what they talked about was that, talked about the fact that there are 36 women currently serving as senators in Jeff City, which is the most it's been in all of history. There's been 1,118 men served, but 36 women, and that's been the most. So what they decided to do was actually create a book that features all of the women in Senate. And Senate, and it's super cool. It's got all of their biographies in here, and how they started and how they evolved into these positions of leadership within the state of Missouri. And so these ladies went ahead, it's actually a group of 11 that did this, and they went ahead and they had enough published from, hold on now, the Missouri Humanities Committee funded it, and they had enough published for all fourth-grade classrooms in every school district in Missouri, and one available for every school building in Missouri. And so I reached out to our senators to have them bring us the books to our district, and I just want to give a shout out to Senator Doug Beck, who showed up on Tuesday with all of the books for our fourth graders in every classroom at every school here. So thank you, Doug, for that. Really appreciate that. The other piece of it is that the literacy bill by Olafland, 11 currently serving now, or 11 women in Jeff City, and so they got together as a group, and they had dinner, and they talked about what is it we want to accomplish? What do we want to change, create, fix? And so they chose literacy. So Olafland, along with MSBA, wrote Senate Bill 681, which addresses literacy and dyslexia. And they do expect that to go through, so that might be something that you want to watch. And the bill includes some funding, better assessments, and training for higher education, training for teachers who are actually at the university level to learn about using, you know, how do you teach children with dyslexia? So anyway, it was very exciting, and something new they added this year is we all went to the Capitol Building, and then the governor and Margie Van Deven talked to us at that point, and we had not done that before. And so the governor talked about teacher retention, starting wages, and building the workforce, so that if you are not necessarily a college-driven person, that you might go into a trade school, but encouraging schools to do that. And I know we do that. We do that through CAPS and different programs. And then Van Deven's talk was about assessments and the MAP test and getting ready to change that up. So, anyway, it was a fun day, and it was cold that day. So I stood out waiting for the bus, and the bus never came. That's a personal side note, but here's the book. Everybody can look at it if you want to, but follow those bills. It'll be exciting to see what happens in Jeff City. Thank you.
And I just wanted, sorry, I wanted to tag on for just a minute because I was very excited when I got the book at my school. And page 47 is Anita Yechel, who served on the Limburg School Board in 1980. She was both president and vice president, so Senator Anita Yechel. Thanks.
Thank you. 7.03 is announcements we have done this month, so we'll go to the upcoming Board of Education agendas, and back to you, Madam Secretary.
There we go. Upcoming Board of Education. As I stated earlier, April 12th at 4:30 will be our special Board of Education meeting, followed by a board workshop, and then on April 21st, we will hold our regular Board of Education meeting. The special board meeting on the 12th is where we'll swear in our new members, and our workshop will be the learning report, and then our meeting on the 21st will be regular agenda items, human resources, financial consent, as well as listening and learning report. Thank you.
7.05, member appointments we have none, so we'll go to the MSBA report, which we will now watch the March report. Colin?
Hello, everyone, and welcome to the Missouri School Boards Association's Board Report for the month of March. We thank you for the opportunity to share some news and information during a few minutes of your board meeting. We begin with a look at the importance of advocacy on the state level. It's critical that board members and superintendents communicate frequently with state legislators about the impact of proposed legislation in your school district. One example of such advocacy work occurred recently when a group of parents and school board members from St. Louis Public Schools visited the Capitol in Jefferson City. One of those making the trip was Emily Kelso, a parent and chair of the St. Louis Parent Action Council.
There are a lot of us who choose to send our students to St. Louis Public Schools and are proud to do so, and are willing to come here on our own time with no compensation and say, you know, we are proud of our schools, we choose SLPS, and we want to see the legislature here invest in our students.
Another parent, Gloria Nolan, says it's important to be an advocate for all children.
We have to be an advocate for children across the district. And so when I think about it, I'm advocating for the children that don't live in my house, that don't have a mom that might show up to something and might not know all of, you know, how they can express themselves. So I can be that voice, and I promised to do it. I promised myself that I would do it.
The St. Louis School Board also has formed a Legislative Advocacy Committee aimed at having a greater impact on legislation being considered in Jefferson City. As the legislative session progresses, we will keep you updated on developments again this year through our Legislative Voice newsletter sent to members via email each Friday during the session, our Twitter feed with up-to-the-minute developments, through critical issue alerts, and periodic webinars. Missouri has its first-ever National Superintendent of the Year. He is Dr. Curtis Kane, Superintendent of the Wentzville School District. The award was announced at the recent American Association of School Administrators Conference in Nashville. Dr. Kane says school boards and superintendents working as a team can benefit the educational opportunities available to students, and he says that's especially true in the current environment.
The ability for school boards and superintendents to effectively work together has always been important, but now, I believe with all the questions, the comments, the criticism, the concerns that school districts are facing, it is more important, more now than ever before, that these two parties work in tandem to support students and their success.
Dr. Kane made those comments during the recent MSBA Annual Conference held in Kansas City, where he was named Missouri's Superintendent of the Year. MSBA's Spring Regional Meetings begin later this month and continue through April. This year's round of meetings will feature presentations from school districts in the region. You'll also have the opportunity to network, share ideas with your colleagues from other districts in your area, and learn more about current issues in public education. You can register for the Spring Regional Meeting in your area through the MSBA website. MSBA's Future Builders Foundation is now accepting applications for the 2022 Early Childhood Education Program of the Year awards. There will be three awards for exemplary early childhood education programs based on school district size. Applications will be judged by the Future Builders Board of Directors. The deadline for submitting an application is April 4th. The awards will be presented at the 2022 MSBA Annual Conference in Kansas City. Application information is available on the MSBA website. That's it for this month's edition of the MSBA Board Report. Thanks for allowing us to have some time at your board meeting, and so long from Columbia.
All right, thank you, Colin. We'll move to 8.0, Special Reports. 8.01 is the Cabinet Updates. We'll start with Joelle. Finance and Facilities.
Finance and Facilities. Both met this month. Our Finance Committee met on Tuesday to go over board items in this packet. We also had some additional conversation around the demographic report that was released, and the data behind that, and then the planning for the future of enrollment in the district, and potential new subdivisions, and things like that. And then our facilities planning committee was kind of on the same path. Since the demographic report came out in February, we went through the demographic data, we used those trends as we planned for the master facility plan for the future, and also future boundary in of new subdivisions. You know, the big topic would be the Crestwood Mall project, which will bring 81 homes to the district, and that's, you know, a couple of years to roll out, but, you know, planning for that in the future.
Thank you. Dr. McKinnney, HR.
Our meeting this month was very brief. We went over the monthly personnel report and had discussions about a few items in that, in that document.
Thank you. Dr. Sparks.
Since our last meeting, only Technology Board Advisory has met, and our middle school principals and instructional coaches joined us so we could do a deep dive on the use of Google Chat, which is a very hot topic in our elementary and middle schools. We temporarily suspended the use of it for students back in December because we were having some challenges with appropriate use, and so one of the things we've grappled with over the course of this year with the Technology Board Advisory is what's the balance between giving students access to tools and teaching them how to appropriately use the tools? So we really used the Technology Board Advisory to develop a plan for how we're going to build systems of support for students to know how to use those tools so that we can slowly begin to roll them back out next year. It was really interesting, one of our advisory members talked about his role in the business community and how he is, he is working through human resources with employees because they are still struggling to appropriately use technology and avoid employment issues. So it's really essential that we teach kids how to do this well, and so that is our work from here on out.
All right, thank you. We'll move now to 9.0, Action Items by Consent. We have action items by consent, 9.01 to 9.11. Would anyone want to remove any of these items for individual consideration? Okay, hearing none. Do I have a motion to approve consent items 9.01 to 9...
Are we approving in items by consent? Are we approving then in items by consent, the review of the board policy that we're changing at this point? Because I know we've been presented it, and we're here to, you know, move on, approve or discuss it. Okay, so I would like, although I'm in a very awkward situation, this is, I think as many of you know, this is my final meeting, my working meeting at least, but I do feel as though we have to have a discussion of this particular item before we vote on it as part of a consent agenda. So I feel as though it really should be a standalone, actually. I have noted some issues with it, and I don't know whether those would necessarily carry over into another meeting or not. So I would entertain some discussion on this, that particular, you know, again, reconsideration of the policy as presented. Open for discussion now, or, you know, polled, or consideration individually at the next meeting?
Well, it was presented at the last meeting.
Yes, it was. It was. So we can still poll unless, you know, again, we can also have a discussion about it before we proceed. And again, because this is part of a consent agenda, and I know this happened here, it happens with so many items, we're left then to vote either, you know, for or against the whole consent agenda. So I'm opening this for discussion. Do you guys feel as though it's okay to go ahead and have a discussion tonight on this particular item?
As far as removing this one for individual consideration?
Yes. Individual consideration, or, again, we'll need to have a discussion...
And you're discussing which one?
Item 9.11.
So all of the policies because there's, it's not just the library policy?
Pardon?
It's not just the library policy?
Oh, I know, I know, but there are, there are policies. I know it is not just the library policy, that they are lumped together. I understand that. So I would move at this point, because I actually believe the library policy should be a standalone discussion, given the amount of things going on about this policy, the level of participation by the community and their interest in it. So, I mean, I would recommend polling it. If we, you know, I can do that as a board member, I know, but we're also in an awkward timing situation. Would anyone like to offer a recommendation in this discussion?
If we poll it, then we discuss it next time?
Mm-hmm.
Generally, if you remove an item from the consent agenda, it will just be moved into this meeting's individual action items agenda.
Okay, okay.
And I think it's 910.
910? I thought it was 911. So Jen, let me, let me say, did you just say that this, if this were polled, it could be placed in separately within tonight's agenda?
Yeah.
Yes.
Why don't we do that? That way, we can proceed with a vote on the entire consent agenda, okay? With that exception.
Okay.
So you want to remove...
I will move to do that.
9.10 and move that?
Well, it's 9.11, Mike.
So do you just get the motion to vote on 9 to 9.9?
Yeah.
Or 911?
With every other item as part of the consent agenda just remaining.
You want to exclude 911, remove that for individual consideration?
Well, removing 911 for individual consideration to be discussed, we can discuss that.
There's a little... I think there's a confusion because I keep, people texting me and telling me it's 910, so I want to make sure that we make the right thing.
Oh, I'm sorry. Okay, so here we have nine board policies. Okay, so we had two, excuse me. So 910, and then there was 911 with additional board policies. But, but the specific library policy is then in 910.
I'm looking at that.
911 is the LNEA agreement.
Yeah.
It has nothing to do with the board policies.
Okay. So then why don't we poll 910, just to have that as a separate item to discuss?
Okay, so then that'll move to individual action.
Yeah, just an individual item, Mike.
Right.
All right.
Okay, so I'm going to re-entertain a motion to have action items by consent, 9.01 to 9.11, with the exception of 9.10. Would anyone, want any of those removed for consideration? So we have to have a motion to approve consent items 9.01 to 9.09 and 9.11, noting that there are none for 9.07 and 9.08.
So moved.
Motion by Jen, second by Mike. So now we'll move to any other further discussion or comments. Okay, hearing none, all in favor?
Aye.
Close. All right, that motion carries 7-0. So then that will move to individual action items. So then we'll move to 10.0, Individual Action Items. So we now have four this evening, including 9.10. So we'll start with 10.10 on the agenda, which is Request for Reconsideration, The Girl Who Fell From the Sky for Library Use, and I'll turn it over to Dr. Sparks.
Yes, so once again, we have an appeal for one of the decisions that was made out of our high school committee on the reconsideration of Girl Who Fell From the Sky. You can see in our, in our summary of this particular review that the committee did vote to retain the book within our libraries. And so what is being asked tonight is for that, that decision to stand. I think one of the things I want to point out that I think is really important because it's become a conversation throughout much of our work with text specifically, is what, where resources fall within curriculum. So when we write curriculum, we have a cycle or a rotation of different content areas where we write curriculum, and those curriculums are written on what is typically a six-year cycle. It can sometimes vary based on other things that are happening within the district. And when we write curriculum, we always start with researching, getting the most current information about how we want to proceed. We do that with the support of our Teaching and Learning Board Advisory, getting input from them as well, and then our teachers really dig in and do the work of writing curriculum to align with our Missouri learning standards. The focus of curriculum is always what are we... The focus of curriculum is always what are we teaching? It is what are those standards, what are those learning targets in terms of the scope and sequence that's going to happen, not just at a particular grade level, but across the grade levels to have that level of alignment. The curriculum's come to the board without resources. Let me give you an example. Last year, we brought, or a year and a half ago, we brought math as a curriculum adoption to the Board of Education. We don't select resources prior to that point in time. Resources are selected afterwards. If we were to start the curriculum process with resources, then we would write curriculum based on whatever texts exist as opposed to what we want our students to learn, which go back to the standards. So the idea when we talk about things like living curriculum is that we need to be able to flex the resources in order to meet the standards that have been written sometimes six years ago, in order to have that flexibility to keep the curriculum relevant, timely, and engaging for our students. So when we talk about things like living curriculum, this isn't something that is new. This isn't something that is unique to Lindbergh. This is the reality of how we keep curriculum relevant, and it doesn't move the baseline of our work, which is around the what we are teaching. Another example of, of living curriculum, obviously, as you know, we're bringing first reading of VLA curriculum tonight. The previous curriculum was written six or seven years ago. I don't have that memorized off the top of my head. But if we did not have living curriculum, we wouldn't have done things like the phonics impact study and selected new resources. So I want to be really careful that we don't conflate resources with curriculum. Resources are how we teach curriculum, they are not the curriculum. So just wanted to clarify that because I think there's a lot of conversation around that topic, and I, I think we all need to start with a common understanding of what we're talking about when we talk about curriculum and resources. So with that, I'll turn it back over to you.
Okay, thank you. So I'll go to the motion first. Do I have a motion to retain the book, The Girl Who Fell From the Sky, written by Heidi W. DeRoe in the library without restrictions as presented?
So moved.
Motion by Megan, second by Christie. So now open for discussions or questions further? Okay, hearing none, all in favor?
I do, I do want to make a comment on this, Mike. Go ahead. I, I feel like in, of all the books that we've been asked to review here on appeal, this is, this is a profoundly moving book. If you were to read the story and read the characters involved, the protagonists, but also the overarching themes, because it's, it really actually has some positive elements to it. You have a young girl who is raised by, she's raised by her grandmother. She, her father was an African-American GI in Europe. And when he was stationed, he met, he was stationed there and he met a Danish woman. And they married, they had children, and their lives began pretty much falling apart after that. And they eventually immigrated to the United States. And I found the immigrant part of this to be very, very, very intriguing. And as I read on, you can see one of the themes here behind all of this is that the family, which starts out kind of, you know, solid, unified, what have you, eventually just falls apart. And it falls apart really because of alcohol abuse, substance abuse in the family, but particularly alcohol. And I think, you know, the way this has been portrayed in this book is that substance abuse, alcohol abuse in this case, is not good. It destroys families, it destroys people. So just taking it, you know, for that, but also some of the other interesting themes. And there are some tough, tough moments in this book. You know, it's not illustrated, but just the narrative itself, there's a couple of issues there that I'm sure, you know, it's going to be concerning to some parents that, for their children to read this or have access to it. But I, I've got to say, it was a profoundly, it was a profoundly moving book, and I think one that, you know, students potentially could benefit from, and particularly in the classroom with restriction. And, you know, again, looking at these types of works, even when they have, in the end, some positive messages, while still containing some very difficult passages, we need to provide, obviously, you know, parents with some notification on that and an ability to opt their kids out for checkout purposes. So I just want to let you know, this, this was a, this is a very different book than the ones that we have been reviewing over the course of the past several months. So take it from there.
Thank you, Mike. Any further discussion or questions regarding the motion? Okay, all in favor of the motion? Aye?
Aye.
Oppose? Okay, motion carries 6-1. We'll move to 10.02, which is request for reconsideration of The Girl Who Fell From the Sky for classroom use. Do you have any further comments? No? Okay. Do I have a motion to retain the book, The Girl Who Fell From the Sky, written by Heidi W. DeRoe, as a choice novel in the classroom with a content advisory as presented?
So moved.
Motion by Matt, second?
Second.
Second by Megan. So we'll open it again for discussion or questions?
I think my comment is, and as we started this journey as a whole, is the list of books used in the classroom are all pretty heavy, very social, emotional, heavy materials. So I was very encouraged when I read the report that we've acknowledged that, you know, we need to kind of change the content up a bit and throw some more positive things in there and work towards not having materials that may have a warning on them. So I, I think that's a little bit of a switch from when we first started the discussion, and I think that's wonderful. So, again, that piece where we can flip, right? We're in the middle and we start here, but we can move some other direction.
You can pivot.
Pivot. Sorry, I should have used that word.
Okay.
But Mike, I did like the book as well. I thought, in the end, both main characters came out successful.
Right.
And I thought that was really.
There was, there was hope at the end.
Yeah.
We often don't see that coming in some books these days. And also what I found interesting, again, we get back, just touching on that substance abuse and how it destroys families. You know, we partner, right, with an organization, Lindbergh does, I think you're familiar with, Christie, we, many of us are, step up, which helps inform our students about the dangers of drug abuse, alcohol abuse, and so forth. So, yeah.
Correct, thank you.
It's also good that in this discussion in particular, that we are shifting our thinking from talking about who this book is not for and focusing on who the book is for. Because we do have students in our district that can identify with it, that can learn from it no matter what. And I really want us to, as a community, to focus together on making sure that the students are what we're focused on and that these are for them and not thinking so much about who it's not for. So I appreciate that discussion.
Well, I think any, any student could read this. I mean, it's not like this is a book per se written for a type of student. You know, I think this is something, you know, any student could actually learn from, I mean, from, based on the storyline. And, and it's a cautionary tale about, you know, not only what can happen in life, but how you can potentially overcome it.
Thanks. Any other discussion, questions? Okay, all in favor?
Aye.
Oppose? Okay, motion carries. Move to 10.03, which is the revised green light plan. Dr. McKinnon?
Happy to outline, so fortunately, in our community, COVID risk levels for transmission are very low. So knock on wood, I almost hate to say that out loud, but throughout the pandemic, the district has modified this green light plan to reflect community conditions, new information that we learn about mitigation guidelines and safety. The goal of the plan's always been to provide the least restrictive learning environment possible while keeping students and staff safely in school. The green light plan tonight has been revised again to reflect current risk levels as well as updated guidance on mitigation. And I'm just going to go through and highlight the revisions from this version of the plan and then answer any questions you might have. So the revisions are face coverings are now optional at Lindbergh ECE and ECE West, and the federal mandate requiring face coverings on student transportation has been lifted. The health screening section has been revised to provide school nurses with more flexibility as they work to determine when students are well enough to attend school. So nurses will continue to, to reference the Washington University Pediatric and Adolescent COVID-19 algorithms for clinicians and schools, but they won't be strictly bound to those guidelines, and they can use some of their own judgment as to when to exclude students from school. The other and final change was we have a 1.5% threshold for a building's total population if we were to go back to a masking scenario. But we have three buildings where 1.5% of the total population equals three or fewer cases. So in one building, one case would be above 1.5%. One case clearly is not an outbreak. So we've changed language to reflect in those three buildings, which is Central Office, the Lindbergh Service Center, and ECE West. When 1.5% of a building's total population equals three or fewer cases, then three cases will be used as the threshold for requiring face coverings. Happy to answer any questions.
Since the spike in Omicron, how close have we gotten to 1.5% in any building? Do you know off the top of your head?
Well, since, since we've come down from the spike, we're not close.
Not close at all.
Yeah. But we have, we've, we've, you know, had those situations where one person could be above 1.5%, and that's something that we needed to adjust because that doesn't make, that's not, doesn't make common sense, obviously.
So the trend in the community of the decline, we've also seen that in the schools?
Yes. I think there was a report when we had one single case in the entire district at one time. One of the, we do, we do, we meet every week and look at the dashboard, and so it's very, very, very low, again, thankfully.
Any more questions, comments? Okay, do I have a motion to approve the revised green light as presented?
So moved.
Motion by Kathy?
Second.
Second by Mike. Any further discussion or questions? All in favor?
Aye.
Oppose? Okay, motion carries, thank you. Now we'll move to item now 10.04, which is the approval of the item by consent 9.10, which is the board policy updates. So I will first ask for a motion, a motion to, for approval of consent item 9.10, board policy updates.
So moved.
Motion by Jen, second?
Second.
Second by Christie. So now we'll open it for discussion, questions, comments?
Dr. Sparks, can you kind of explain the process of how revising the library policies came about and the process to actually do that, please?
So the process actually began last year as our library media specialists were identifying a goal of going for the Missouri Exemplary Libraries Program. And within that program, one of the expectations is that your policies have been renewed within the previous five years. Most of our private, our policies for library were from the year 2004, so significantly outside of that, excuse me, outside of that five-year window. So the process actually started last year. Obviously, we've had a lot of conversations about libraries over the course of this school year and what, what books are accessible to our students. So in going further with the development of these policies, we have worked closely with our school district attorney as well as our Teaching and Learning Board Advisory to get additional feedback before talking with the board at the December Board Workshop about the development of these policies and what was being recommended for inclusion. And that is what has led us to a first reading last month and then for approval tonight.
And can you talk about the Teaching and Learning Committee? Like, when did they, who was able to give feedback and how often they met?
So our Teaching and Learning Board Advisory received the, the policy revisions prior to one of the meetings. The Teaching and Learning Board Advisory, as you know, is comprised primarily of parents. We have a couple of students who are on there as well as a couple of ancillary staff members as well. So our, our library media specialist joined us to go through these policies piece by piece and analyze where there were potential issues. For instance, as we went into, not only, I should clarify that the, the board advisory looked at both the policies and procedures, and procedures, of course, are not voted on by the board. But they went through and looked at those and gave some really good recommendations about clarifying the difference between a reconsideration request for a classroom versus for a library. So really provided some high level of clarity, reading it, reading these policies and procedures with kind of an uninformed background, for lack of a better term. So that was what led us to bring the policies forward in December. Since then, the Teaching and Learning Board Advisory has also read, given feedback on some of the forms correlated. So for instance, the reconsideration form has been updated with their input, as has the checklist for what the committee is providing feedback on when there is a reconsideration process. You're welcome.
Any more questions for Dr. Sparks or comments?
Sure, Tara, if you would, you know, just kind of going through the policy. I'm looking actually at, well, I'm looking all over it, but I'm looking on page three, which, which is, I guess that's the first page on the bottom where we've had some additions in red. I noticed we see those have been highlighted for us. And I'm reading through it, and I, you know, I can see where you're, you know, citing the LA. I was wondering, excuse me, before I go on, PICO decided. Okay. Who recommended that? I'm just curious, was that like the attorney, our attorney? Okay.
So it originally came up in our conversations with our attorney, and then MSBA added it as part of, so we did not include that when we sent the revisions to MSBA.
Okay.
As MSBA goes through and they look at the, the proposed policy, they align it to appropriate law. So PICO is really the basis for what is in red there.
Okay, and I think I probably know who you conferred with on that at MSBA. I just noted that down towards the bottom, you know, that students were at the bottom of the page, page three, for those of you who might have access to, to be able to look. Students will access materials that support their learning within their curriculum and materials for their own interests. Materials will not be excluded on the basis of ideological disapproval or on the identities of characters and authors. And what I wanted to ask you was, you know, looking at some of the terms embedded there, you know, ideological disapproval, I, I saw that, and I began thinking to myself, you know, as a long student of, you know, going back to political theory and a social scientist, it, it makes me a bit nervous to see that we're using a term like ideological in a school policy. I say that because it's often the case that that term is used, used as a loaded, sometimes, you know, weaponized term against people. And obviously, many of you might be aware that when we talk about ideology, we often are referring not to our own framework for viewing reality, right? We have our own frameworks that we use, our own sort of set of ideas that we often use that to describe others. I see it as othering, okay? And so I'm, I'm very concerned that, that we're using. And so I'm, I'm very concerned that, that we're using this term and I'd like to see something else in its place because when you start using a term like that and as time goes on and after all our kids and, you know, we, board members and staff have moved on, that term still remains. And is it the most appropriate term to use here? Could there be another term?
It is, it is the term used in PICO specifically, which for everyone who, you know, to clarify, PICO, Board of Education versus PICO is a Supreme Court case that guides First Amendment rights of what is eligible to be in libraries.
Right. PICO uses a lot of terminology and I encourage people to read PICO in its entirety. I have. And I have to say that, you know, I just feel as though those types of terminologies, and by the way, PICO is a 40-year-old case. They're using terms such as inculcation of students in PICO. Does anyone know what inculcation means? Do we use that anymore, Dr. Lake? I don't think so. But there, there's a lot of terminology that is really itself in that decision dated. It is a, we're looking to the guiding light of PICO as a three-justice plurality decision. Three of the nine justices and two that joined in concurrence partially and with some objection. And then four other justices who basically said, we should be having nothing to do with this. This is a local, school-based decision. We don't even have all the facts here properly. It should be remanded back for that. And so what you have is a decision where you, when you read it, you realize they're all over the place. The three justices, I think, are being enshrined here in this decision because they're basically saying, look, public school libraries need to be, you know, a place for complete free expression, that, you know, the free flow of information and, and, you know, expression and so forth, open to students. In fact, some of the books used in this case, I remember reading in college, I still have them. Soul on Ice by Elrich Cleaver, co-founder of Black Panthers, who later rejected all of his views in a later book that he wrote. But my point here is that this case is everywhere. To simply use that as the guiding light for this plurality opinion, I think is misleading. And if you look at the opinion of one of the justices that agreed, you know, concurred, our attorneys out there know what we're talking about, that concurred with the plurality, he though had to make a distinction. And he said, in terms of First Amendment, basically, let's just put any book out there for students to have access to, we have to, you know, maintain that freedom of First Amendment process or First Amendment freedoms. This particular justice said, and he agreed with them, but said that this principle needs to be narrowed. School, I'm quoting now, "School officials must be able to choose one book over another without outside interference when the first book is deemed more relevant to the curriculum or better written or when one of a host of other politically neutral reasons is present." These decisions obviously will not implicate First Amendment values and even absent space, listen to this, librarians too, and even absent space or financial limitations that a district may have. First Amendment principles would allow a school board to refuse to make a book available to students because it contains offensive language, and this justice cites that in a decision that was made just a couple of years before, or because it is psychologically or intellectually inappropriate for, for the age group, or even perhaps because the ideas it advances are quote, manifestly inimical for those out there. Again, this is 40 years old. That means unfriendly or like very against something, inimical to the public welfare. And then cites that case. And of course, school officials may choose one book over another because they believe that one subject is more important or is more deserving of emphasis. That view, which was kind of the middle ground view in this case, written by one justice, one justice who is famously or to some infamously known as the author of the opinion of Roe versus Wade, that's his opinion. In this case, that's all over the place. So to simply look at PICO and pull, again, some of their terminology back in the day when ideology, anti-Americanism, all these other kinds of things were, you know, floating out there as terms and you can see it throughout the case. We're in a different place today, okay? And so I get very concerned about this. And as I've said before, and I'm saying it again, and this will be my last time, everybody, this is my last working meeting, I strongly encourage the district, and I know in this policy, there is, there's, excuse me, there's mention of the balance that we need to have or that, I'm sorry, that there's a discussion, you know, about seeking out or whatever. I'm, I'm in weeding, so I'm already up to weeding. By the way, I, I like reconsideration is a better term than weeding. I know weeding's the professional term now. Are they, okay, well, reconsideration, because that's been stricken through and it's been replaced by weeding. When I looked up weeding, I saw it as a certain kind of set of things to be done. But we are in effect reconsidering when we look at our collections and we have to make choices about what to keep, what to move on. I mean, that could be from a variety, for a variety of reasons, as you know, Tara, and it could be wear and tear. It could be just, this book is gone, we lost it. But then again, you know, what other kinds of, you know, what other kind of factors come into that decision-making process? Is it relevancy? Is it, is it, say, today, you may find The Girl That Falls From the Sky more relevant than a similar book, similar, and with a bad ending, Anna Kranin by Tolstoy? Do we even have Anna Kranin in our library? I hope we do, I haven't checked. I'm just saying, because it's a classic. And I often wonder, you know, in this process of weeding as well, what are we losing? And we're losing perhaps voices, voices from the past that still can echo through to today and have significance, as well as bringing on, you know, new texts. In that process, though, I think we need to figure out ways. Dr. Lake, we have created a number of board advisory committees since you came on. I have thought it's an awesome thing. I am so glad it was done. We have people who can participate in the, from the community. So parents, teachers, staff, citizens from the community can participate and provide input into, you know, what Lindbergh policy will be, the directions we're taking. You know, I go back to our strategic plan process and everything that we did back there, looking to, with intentionality, pull in the greater community in that process. And I think we're at a point now where we have to pull in, again, the greater community. We have to ensure that everybody has a voice at the table and for this reason, since this is, as Justice Blackman said, I mean, this is a, this is, there's tension here. And his, and what I just read you, he goes on to say, there's always going to be tension in this area. But to help get through it, navigate it, I think the best thing to do would be to create an advisory committee of sorts to assist in the process, but at least provide input to our librarians, teachers, staff, those who are, and even students who are impacted by this. Hear their voices, you know, decisions will be made and not everybody is going to be pleased, okay? Because that's just not going to happen. But let's try and bring all the voices to the table in, in every effort we can to do that. I mean, it's sort of, it's, it's the democratization, I'm going to use that word, of education. You know, so again, I, I just want to leave it with that. I know we're not probably in any position tonight to even, you know, initiate any kind of changes or discuss, you know, this, this matter, because this is going to take a whole nother meeting if it does or more. I'm just asking that everybody be included in this process as best as possible, not as a subcommittee of teaching and learning, but as a standalone committee. And going forward and bringing everybody to the table. I'd love to be there myself as a citizen of Lindbergh, not as a board member anymore, but just as a citizen, if nothing else, just to listen to what's going on, okay?
Okay.
That is, that is the end of my discussion. Mr. President?
Thank you.
And Mr. Superintendent, Dr. Lake, thank you for, for holding on to this and the rest of my colleagues, I appreciate it.
Thank you for your service as well, mine definitely. But now, given that, we'll have to move to a vote on the motion as presented, so all in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Opposed?
No.
Okay. Motion carries. We'll move now to 11.0, which is reports, so 11.01 for the record. We have four for the record reports and you can reach out to Dr. Sparks or her team with any questions for English Language Arts Curriculum, Library Curriculum, School Counseling Program Evaluation, or the Multilingual Learner Program Evaluation. No other reports this evening, so we'll move to 12.0, which is the Citizen Comments on Non-Agenda Items. So at this time, we will hear, I think we have two, I have to get back to my, just one. You got yours up?
No, I don't.
Sorry.
You have two.
Okay, we do have two. So we'll start with, I'll call your name and the item you're presenting on, so, and you have three minutes, like the agenda items, so we'll start with Mr. John L. Fallon Bell in the State of Lindbergh School District.
At the outset, I would like to make a request. Apparently, Dr. Lake was able to find favor with the Board of all, the Board of Education to play catch-up because of a missed Board of Education meeting. And I'm just asking you to demonstrate a little bit of situational awareness, given the changes in the Board of Education calendar. The February 17th meeting was canceled and rescheduled due to inclement weather. The rescheduled meeting was regrettably reformatted as a remote Zoom meeting. Under these circumstances, public comment was restricted to written comments only. I'm asking you, Mr. President, to acknowledge this limitation and reset the clock permitting an additional three minutes afforded at the February 17th meeting. I'm not seeking personal privilege, rather, I'm seeking established privilege denied, not by poor judgment on your part, but by poor weather. So will you afford me an additional three minutes?
So at this time, everyone else is allowed three minutes, so we'll give you three minutes. If you carry over just a little bit, I know you've presented your comments, we'll allow you a little grace with that.
And quite frankly, I don't think that I would consume the six minutes, but I'd like to have a little bit of breathing room, if I may. So I think we hit a compromise. Let's see how this works out.
And allow you to go over a little bit, because, given you, given you the length of your comments.
Okay. Good enough. So I, I would assume that you did get my written comments and I made every effort, in contrast to word salad, is to try to come up with a clear and concise assessment of where we are as a school district. And it seemed to me the best way to do that was to ask what I perceived to be salient questions. And the first question is, what was the district's rank in 2017 and 2021? 2017, it was number one out of 390 districts. 2021, it's 76 out of 396 districts. You're shaking your head and...
So here's what I would say, it's 2014, 15, so I just wanted you to have the year right.
I understand that, but that is extended up to 2017. And what I find to be pretty interesting is that on March 16th of 2017, I don't know if Director Alonso remembers the exchange we had at the candidate forum. Do you remember that? Okay, I listened to everybody who was running for the Board of Education and I approached you because I thought, you know what? This guy's a mathematician. He teaches science. He's rational. He's reasonable. And I posed a question to him. I said, let's be real clear about what's happening here. The school district is being taken over by the teachers' union. It's plain and clear. Can you show me one school district that is a number one school district that's run by the teachers' union? I asked him point blank. And then I tried to help him. Let's go east to west. New York, Baltimore, Washington, Chicago, St. Louis. Let's jump to Los Angeles and rebound back to St. Louis. This is just not good. And from my perspective, if I was to assign a grade to this district, in 2021, I'd give it an A. Currently, I'd give it an F. In large part for these next questions. How would you describe the constituents of the Board of Education? It's very clear to me, and I've been coming to these meetings since November, and I have perceived what is the prevailing culture. And the district is clearly not serving the students, the parents, and the taxpayers. They are serving the national, state, and district teachers' union, among others. The next question, how would you describe the culture for learning in terms of order of magnitude? And this is just so straightforward. The order of magnitude in 2017, I think is a safe deduction, is human, gender, race, and ethnicity. 2021, it's been turned upside down, inside out, a culture that promotes gender, race, ethnicity, and human. In 2017, it was an academic culture that eyed with what works. The district has succumbed to an outlier agenda. And I feel as though that it's interesting to note that the St. Louis soccer team just hired its first player. He's from Switzerland. Did you see the picture that was affiliated with that press release? He was wearing a T-shirt. It had in a column, black, white, yellow, red, and there was a line through that. And below that, in larger font, at his waist, was human. We are all human beings first. You're really misguiding students when you re-order that order of magnitude. And I love your smile, Dr. Lake, I really do. What was the dominant pedagogy in 2017, 2021? Reading, writing, arithmetic. Now it's diversity, equity, and inclusion. One in 2017 is useful, it's purposeful learning.
And Mr. Bell, we'll give you a short period of time to get through six and seven and then...
That's fine. I'll defer from my concluding remarks. Thank you very much. It's, it's a non-secretor. And we have a candidate at the candidate forum who was very dismissive of these notions of diversity, equity, inclusion. She surely gave a side look to the history and the depth of its origin and how it has seeped down through the culture and it's now present in this district. What are the salient questions, you know? I mean, when these kids get off the bus at the end of the day, they ought to be figuring out what's the difference between a newspaper article and an editorial... out, what's the difference between a newspaper article and an editorial? What's the difference between a noun and a verb? What's the difference in value, perhaps, in a factor that's been converted from a fraction to a decimal? They don't need to get off the bus and say, hey, Dad, hey, Mom, I don't know, am I a boy? Am I a girl? Am I whatever? Clarity of intention begets learning based on wonder and curiosity. But what we've got now going is curious.
About 20 more seconds.
And the last question. Last question. What are the expected outcomes? Confident, secure problem solvers. I made a living working with serious problem solvers. And what we're going to get in the future, based upon the culture, is incompetent, insecure, maladjusted future adults. What we've got to keep in mind is that overarching value of e pluribus unum.
Okay.
Allo, the many, one.
Thank you.
Not the other. And thank you.
Thank you. We do have one more speaker, Mike Muller, I believe.
Lindbergh's board and administration have stated critical race theory is not taught in our district. Based on my understanding of CRT and what I've heard from concerned parents, the practice of CRT is actively being applied in our district. Critical race theory is not a class or a subject, but rather is a hidden framework designed to create a lens which sees our country as systematically oppressive towards certain groups. Karl Marx's writings focused on raising a subjective consciousness in people so they see and evaluate everything in terms of oppression. Herbert Marcuse and other writers expanded this critical approach to seeing oppression in race, gender, ability, and even language. Paulo Freire put this practice into education. His Pedagogy of the Oppressed is directly named in the teaching programs of Cobb and Crown Apple, the consultants hired by Lindbergh for a Belonging with Dignity program, which is currently in use. Freire said teaching is a political act and created a practice of education to engage the student with certain readings, questions, and exposures until the meetings become their own. In other words, it was indoctrination. Lindbergh quit teaching grammar and spelling years ago because it was considered oppressive. Today, we are at the point where the CRT ideology has expanded to intentionally manipulate thoughts, values, and decisions of the students. The fifth-grade history textbook refers to history as the story of the past, which is always changing as each new generation adds a new perspective. This book states that the people of history also change because of the lens through which we view them. When you cut through the lingo, it's another CRT presentation and a Marxist evaluation of history that sounds eerily like Howard Zinn revisionism. In high school, US history, US history students are regularly asked about unfulfilled promises and what CRT identity groups are excluded when reading historical speeches and documents. This is based on Marxist critical thought, which creates an us-versus-them mentality. This is not the same as critical thinking required under Missouri learning standards. Genuine critical thinking equips students to become smart, independent decision-makers, while Marxist critical thought turns students into revolutionaries. Last school year, Lindbergh violated PPR when asking students to identify themselves according to CRT identity groups. The district self-reported this violation of federal law, but they're clearly still focused on teaching CRT. Unfortunately, this focus has dropped a once number-one Missouri school to number 76, a shocking fall that seems almost deliberate. Lindbergh schools, once a pillar of the community, are now a major liability. One parent said many of her friends are pulling their young kids out of this district because, quote, "It is failing the children." It's time to return this district to academic success centered squarely on the students. Subversive critical race theory indoctrination has been fully exposed and will be actively opposed until it's removed. You can count on that. Thank you.
Thank you. Thank you for everyone that commented. We'll move to 13.0, which is recess, and we've already conducted our executive session, so there's, we will move to 15.0, which is adjournment. Do I have a motion to adjourn, Board meeting number 1549?
Seven.
Motion by Megan.
Second.
Second by Jen. All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carried. Board meeting 1549 is adjourned.